How we doing, fellas? Tech rocking and rolling? All right.
Over there.
Stars are aligning. Can't bring me down today, Stephanie.
I can't bring you down, why?
Nope, I'm a happy dude. Did you like my banter?
Yeah, that's fine.
Did you go sign Tim's bridge deal? Oh.
Oh, well.
Here he comes.
Hey.
What are you doing here so early?
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
What's the call?
The buses were at FS this week filling up. Scotty home called me and he's like, the buses are at FS.
Famous ones.
Bill, the case.
Thank you.
Yeah, decent does have.
No, they shut it off.
Oh, no, they, they, uh, they were really.
Yeah, do you like how they say the twenty eighty group says what helps with that?
No, it doesn't.
We haven't, we haven't been part of the twenty eighty group for two years.
It's just, it's just parties. You know, we have two fifteen months. It's easy. They as well to get, and they want to shut it down.
Well, we gave them enough notice and it's been canceled for years.
Yeah. And then it also says eight twenty eight to the party's teams. The remaining person shall do what is necessary. Between two twenty two to making one. And they said, if we make moves, it's so.
When we first started talking about this, the meaning we had here about us getting out. It's like, we have every right to get out.
Did he do anything?
Good evening, how's it going? Okay. Am I standing in my life way here?
Yeah, just a cover sheet.
Okay, okay. I'll get top filling.
But then I said, there are certain things, like if it was in.
Today. There you go, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I didn't know.
Yes. Shares today. Four percent today. Oh, my God. It's pretty good for one day since someone will take four percent here in a bank. Here's what a ten year looks like. You put in ten grand there, that's about three point four million dollars today. Ten years later. July, I think we're doing it July.
Well, they don't, they have some work to do.
I don't know.
I'm just saying. Sort of like one year ago.
Yeah.
A little bad, like.
Isn't her, hey, Crystal? Okay. Uh, which one is that? The number six. I've got five fifty nine, we'll start in one minute. Okay. All right, good evening, everyone, I have six o'clock. At this point, I'm going to convene the meeting, roll call for attendance, please.
Here.
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 Here, we do have a quorum, if now you'd kindly rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda deletions? I think Supervisor McIntyre mentioned number six will be scrapped from tonight's meeting, which is consider appointment to the Warren County Veteran Affairs Commission to serve as a position due to resignation with possible action. So we will pull number six from the agenda at this time. Are there, are there any other agenda deletions or corrections? Seeing none, the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. A, approve zoning administrator job description. B, approve zoning administrative assistant job description. C, approve payroll removal. Bryant Houston, detention officer, sheriff's office, effective August seven, two thousand twenty five. D, receive and file new hire approved by the Warren County Conservation Board. Colton Shwinkie, conservation maintenance technician, effective July seven, two thousand twenty five. E, approve temporary new hire Deb Richardson, temporary election work, auditor's office, effective seven twenty one, two thousand twenty five. F, approve corrective fiscal year twenty six cola increases in sheriff's office for Craig Douglas, Eldon Emick, and Jeffrey Watrachi. Quatrochi. Effective Ja- July one, two thousand twenty five. Reference revolution, resolution twenty five dash one fifty N, approved on June seventeen, two thousand twenty five. G, approve merit increase Amy Martin's data administrative assistant, health services, effective July five, two thousand twenty five. And H, approve class C retail alcohol license for Carper Win- Family Winery at forty six oh three Dakota Street, Norwalk. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Second item on our agenda are our claims. We have a claims figure in the amount of one million, three hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Do we have a motion on the claims?
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Second, we have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, claims are paid. Number three is consider application to use Warren County Justice Center grounds for the Indianola Elks, number two eight one four, second annual car show with possible action.
Make a motion to approve the use of the Warren County Justice Center grounds for the Indianola Elks, number twenty eight fourteen, second annual car show.
I'll second that, but with the, with the note that the request for the rental fee be waived.
Thank you for noting that.
We have a motion and a second with the waive of the rental fee. This stems from a, um, a prior meeting that we had in a work session where a gentleman from the Elks came and presented on the use of the grounds for an upcoming car show. It's, it's really well done, I think it'll be a great event and it's, um, it fits well with the square and, um, won't be inconvenient with the timing, so. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion from the board?
That event is Sunday, July twenty seventh, on the Indianola Square.
And I believe he said there might be a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five cars at that event. So if you get a chance, swing on up, it'll be fun.
That's fun.
All right, motion second, roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Number four is consider approval of positive pay with possible action. Um, this is a di- an additional, um, safety mechanism for our treasurer and auditor that, um, hopefully ferrets out, um, when people are writing bad checks with the county's number on it. Um, it's just an, an additional step. I, I believe the total cost was something in the realm of thirty dollars a, was it annually or was it monthly? Monthly? Um, it was pretty minor, but, um, I think it's needed, so. I'll make a motion to approve positive pay.
Second.
Any other discussion from the board? Andrew will be quite happy. Uh, roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. And also, just for a quick point of order, committing fraud against a governmental entity also tied in with the county attorney and judges and has their own jail, it's a bad idea, don't do it. All right, number five, consider application for road closure for the Nas- National Balloon Classic with possible action.
I'll make a motion to approve the road closure for the National Balloon Classic.
Second.
It's like Tim has something to say on it. I also believe we have some folks from the National Balloon Classic here, so.
Well, you got Tim. The guys to be aware that in the past, they have dust controlled one hundred and fiftieth in Jersey, in our Iowa. That's not going to be done in this road closure application. Not that big of a deal because two years ago, we started hard, putting a hard closure on one hundred and fiftieth, which actually prevents the spectators from taking gravel back into town, which has been a godsend. It's not going to make the people who live on one hundred and fiftieth and used to get in their free dust control, but traffic's actually going to, it's been reduced on that road due to the event, so. We will get phone calls, I guarantee it. But, like I said, traffic's actually down since we're putting a hard closure on the roads, so. Just so you're aware.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number six has been, uh, scratched. Number seven is discussion regarding board meeting times with possible action. So I'll open it up to the board, I'll also open it up to the public, if anyone from the public has thoughts on board meeting times.
You want to open it, or?
Sure, I'll listen to anyone. I just, I want to hear from the board, we, we discussed this in a work session, um, recently, last week, last Tuesday. And, and honestly, here's the, here's the crux of that. Right now, we hold a meeting in the morning on the first Tuesday of the month, and then we hold an evening meeting on the second Tuesday of the month. The second Tuesday of the month evening meetings have been pretty sparsely attended, which is fine, other than, uh, there are some inconveniences by holding a night meeting when we have staff and other, um, usually, usually flexing time, or if they're salary, they're taking some time from somewhere else to be here for them. And so I wanted to gauge sort of what the board wanted to do as far as meetings going forward. We can keep it as is, we can change it, uh, we can look at changing it in, uh, the start of the next, uh, calendar year on January one. Really open to, to anything, but I wanted to hear from the board and from the public on what their thoughts are on our evening meeting. But it's open up to the public, too, so I will, I will entertain your comments if you, uh, if you're like, I really like night meetings. We'll hear you.
Um, the evening meetings, which we have one this evening, tonight, um, I'm not opposed to changing the times, but my concern is we do have like some instances on the, like a zoning change or budget meetings, things of that nature that are well attended and typically in the evening. So I guess as long, I don't, um, I really don't have a preference on the meeting times necessarily, but in certain circumstances, some of those meetings make sense to be at night because people do come to them. Not necessarily like the meeting we have tonight, the regular meeting, but if there's a zoning change, or like our budget presentation, or something of that nature, this seems like those are evening meetings to me, but.
Yeah. I think we talked about that in the work session that.
And I, I would, I missed the work session, so I didn't, you could fill me in.
Not, not your, not at all a problem, you had other obligations, you had to be at, but the, the way we talked about that is usually when we know it's going to be a heavily attended, um, meeting, we know ahead of time, we, we hear from people, and so we want to always make sure that those meetings are at the most convenient time in the evening. And, um, I know we have some zoning that we'll have coming up, um, those are certainly important to hear from the public.
I guess I don't want.
Have a preference, so.
Yeah, me, me, neither, neither do I, but I don't want to get into a situation where we give up the night meetings and then we're having night meetings anyway and our staff.
Especially with all the zoning meetings that we're going to be having.
Zoning meetings if we're just right back at the same place we were before, but.
Exactly.
So it might be in everybody's best, best interest just to close out the year with night meetings, keep them until the first, and we'd have a lot of our recodification done. Otherwise, we change them to both morning meetings, but we're coming in the evening all the time anyway, just because all the zoning issues, or zoning recodification meetings.
Right.
Does that make sense to you, Aaron?
Yeah.
I like the morning meetings personally, but, but.
Well, and it's easier on our employees.
We're just going to be having then a morning and a evening me. Me, but. Just depends on how many times we'd be meeting in the evening still.
The other thought that I had was, um, you know, instead of an, in lieu of a night meeting, maybe a meeting that starts, you know, four o'clock or something like that.
That's not a bad idea either.
Because then you've got, you've got staff here on a regular workday till four thirty anyhow, um, and so they're not, you know, sometimes that day ends at four thirty and then they, especially those that don't live in Indianola, then they're driving back to wherever they live, maybe, maybe Milo or Norwalk or wherever, and then coming back, or they stay here, I mean, which is fine, but, um, it's, it might be a little more convenient as well. But I, I would agree on, um, things that are going to be contentious, things that are going to be well attended, um, I, I would prefer those at night so that we can get the most people here possible, so they can voice their concerns. So I, I'm, I'm fine leaving it, you know, and then we can, uh.
Well, in the.
We can readdress it in, in January and see where we're at, but at, at a, at a pure curiosity, um, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, we have eleven twelve. And news, thirteen. Thirteen's a high watermark for a non, non, um.
Yeah.
Zoning matter or something contentious. And I'm not sure why folks are here, I'm, you're always welcome to come, there's, there's no like hiding the ball here from this board, I, I do stuff right up in public, it's fine. Um, yeah, sure.
My comment is that, and we attended zoning meetings a year or two, so. Don't take this personally, because I feel the same way at the zoning meetings, I can't see you. All I see is from here up.
Yep.
So. It's not the welcoming, we want you to be part of what we're talking about. I don't see anyone's going on. And the inconvenience in this, in this room is horrible. It's hopeless. Everything sounds lovely, and I'm trying so hard to decipher what the subject matter is that you're talking about, and I think the rest of us are, are feeling the same way. We, we are part of humanity, and I mean, with this order of, I feel like the older than us, and we're, no, we're not, we're not. And I'm sure this isn't the first time.
Might have been, but, okay.
I'd certainly be in favor of doing something different than these monitors.
Yeah, they're not serving us, so, no, there's, there's nothing on it.
My monitor said no signal detected for about six months, so I'm not, I don't even, I don't have anything that I'm watching on it.
We're not trying to hide.
But I'm not trying to hide behind it either, you're going to see my face.
There we go. And I got my chair all the way.
Now, Stephanie ducks, though, she's, she's not here on this.
I could bring a pillow, maybe.
You like them, you prefer the night one? Okay.
My first attendance here, but I had the opportunity to be there after work hours was really a nice feature, and I appreciate it to have that open to public.
Okay.
This four.
And that, and that's what we're doing now, we typically have one regular morning, uh, the first, uh, first Tuesday of the month is a morning meeting, and the third Tuesday is a evening meeting, is what we're doing now. Yes, yes, I have sat out there, it's been a long time, I've been here, yep, but yes.
No, it's very difficult. I, I think I've asked for some acoustic paneling on the wall to kind of reduce some of the reverberation a couple of times, but.
We, we did try that, but they didn't stay, I don't know what happened, but.
They had the panels up here, did it, I don't think they did any, they didn't help.
It, it has to be at the ceiling level as well. So, and we need to speak up, too, that'll help.
Can I ask a question? I remember, we're not obsessed with this, we're here for something unrelated to your agenda.
You're fine.
Can we ask that at the end of the meeting?
Yes, that would be the public comment.
Yeah. Thanks for asking.
I would, I guess I'd move to keep the evening meeting for the, for the rest of the year, especially with recodification coming up.
Okay.
And then let's see what happens in, in January.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
No, you're good.
But if we move it to four o'clock, that's fine with me, too, but.
Okay. I would appreciate that, I, I do miss the staff not being here. And it would help me, but it's not all about me.
You're part of our team, and I think it's essential we work, I mean, y'all have full time jobs, so.
Well, then for now, we will leave it as is unless someone has something else and we can bring it back up, so. Okay, again, literally just a heat check, folks, I just wanted to see what people thought, if people said, we got thirteen today, but I've been in these meetings before where we've had two, zero, one, and at some point, I, I sort of, my mind's a little different, but I run sort of like an analysis of like benefit versus inconvenience. And when we, when we don't, when we're not crossing at the right spot, at some point, I'll make a change, so. I'm glad that you're here. Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, number eight, consider approval of hiring additional staff in zoning with possible action. This is a zoning admin assistant. This came up in a work session that we had recently, uh, for those that, um, might not be in the know here, Warren County is having, or is under a hiring freeze at this point. We're doing that for a variety of reasons, um, one, to right-size staff to revenue. The board felt that that was probably a good thing to do, and it's not because we don't value our employees, it's not because we don't think our employees are doing a good job, but it's because we collect so much tax revenue and we have to make that fit. And I don't have a printer press, I, I certainly don't hear from very many constituents or people in the public saying I would like to pay more property taxes, it's just not something I hear, I hear a lot of the opposite. Um, and so one of the ways to address that is when we have staff attrition, someone retires, someone decides to quit, and someone gets fired for cause, then we have to take a real hard look at whether or not we're going to backfill that position. Um, and frequently we will, sometimes we don't. Uh, the zoning office had a departure, I believe, in February, they have been very, very thin-staffed, um, since then, and I think that the board, at least in the, um, in the work session, came to the conclusion that, um, adding some support back into that office, especially considering what's going on with ordinances, and many, many rezones probably made a lot of sense. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the hiring of a zoning staff member admin assistant.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, I can assure you that Becky will be exceedingly happy when she finds out that pass, but I, I'm guessing she knew it would. All right, number nine is consider Mid-American Energy Company electric easement along the Great Western Trail with possible action. Good evening, Zach.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hi, Zach.
All right. So I was contacted by a representative from Mid-America Energy Company that they are expanding their electrical phases, uh, all the way across, from Arilla to the Microsoft Data Center, across I thirty-five, and in order to do that, they need to be able to install guy wires to structurally stable their current existing telephone poles. So they're requesting a twenty-foot easement parallel to the Great Western Trail on southeast Thirty-Fifth Street, all the way up north to Arilla, that's what directly impacts the property that we manage, before they kind of continue westbound. On Wednesday of last week, the Warren County Conservation Board reviewed this easement and approved of it, uh, this easement has also been reviewed by Don Bowman, with no major bumps, so.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
What's their maintenance on these guy wires?
So from the base, to my understanding, they have to install these guy wires thirteen foot from the base of each pole. Their twenty-foot easement going beyond that thirteen foot is to maintain ingress and egress, just so they can stay on top of insulation, or if there's any problems, uh, to my understanding, it's going to be mowing, or we are going to try to reseed it back down into native prairie grasses that we can manage. So we've had some difficulties in the past with tree plantings during a drought, uh, prairie is the, probably the most ideal habitat up there, um, so we're going to try to work with them to do the native seed.
Okay. Now, when they come through and repair or replace, I know in the past, they've just mowed everything and disturbed the ground, are they willing to work with you guys on that?
I think we could get them to work with us on that, um, to my understanding, they are going to be responsible for basically reseeding it back, we just have to have that conversation to put it back into natives, so.
Okay.
But, good question. We just have to have that conversation to put it back into natives. So, but good question.
Thank you.
But they'll be putting it back as native prairie?
That's what we need to negotiate. It's currently not within the easement to do that.
Oh. Do we want to get it in there first?
I can make that request.
Okay, all right.
So if you guys have a motion, maybe we could do a contingency on
Okay.
recommendations from the conservation department?
All right. I just, I just worry
Yeah.
about that relationship. Just.
They're supposed to be setting me up with a community development coordinator. So maybe that relationship could blossom into something more positive to help out with the bike trails.
All right.
But I'm, I think this public utility thing will probably be pushed forward. So.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure how else to handle that.
All right. I like the contingency. So if we could do that, I'll be a yes.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I'll make a motion to approve the Mid-American Energy Company electric easement along the Great Western Trail with the recommendations, um, from our conservation department.
Regarding reseeding.
Regarding reseeding.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion from the board? Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Number 10 is consider fiscal year 26 agreement between Warren County and Cuyahoga Humane Society of Indianola with possible action.
I will make a motion.
Are they not here?
To approve the Warren County and Cuyahoga Humane Society of Indianola, uh, FY 26 agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Don, did you have an opportunity to make those tweaks or changes?
Yes, if they wanted to.
And they're, and Cuyahoga was good with them?
Ericson, Cuyahoga, we wanted your approval.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Got it.
Got it, got it. Thank you.
Motion and a second. Roll call please.
Ericson?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you all. Number 11, uh, receive and file reports. We have four reports tonight. A, general assistance, B, humane society, C, recorder, D, sheriff's office quarterly report. I'll make a motion to receive and file those reports.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Uh, number 12 is supervisors' report. Would anyone like to share anything?
We've got a big week coming up at the end of the month with the balloon classic coming up, so we hope to see a lot of people in Indianola.
Crystal and I, uh, met with the Warren County Farm Bureau and basically outlined some things that we're working on for recodification on the zoning ordinance as far as the, the 10-acre minimum and, and, uh, we got a lot of positive feedback and some suggestions and whatnot. So I think, uh, I think everybody feels very involved in this and we want to keep that steam going and, and make sure that, uh, we get a lot more input on it.
Perfect, thanks. Does anyone have a date for the county fair this year?
Twenty ninth.
July 29? July 19?
No.
No, July.
Maybe, what?
Isn't it the 21st?
Twenty-third through, 23rd, July 23rd.
July 23.
That's weird.
Twenty-third to the 28th.
Through the 28th.
The 28th, okay.
I just wanted to point something out that I saw this week that I thought was pretty neat. And that was, it looked to me like a lot of folks in the county came to help pick up and clean up at the fair. Um, getting it ready for the upcoming county fair. And I also, um, did get a chance to see the Amish barns that are up and out there. And they look pretty nice.
They are nice.
It looks really nice. And I think that's, uh, historically pretty accurate for what that might have looked like a long time ago as well. So. If you get a chance, get out to the fair, get out to the balloon classic. Um, when you support things in the county, um, one, it's a lot of fun. And two, um, you're strengthened in the county. Like it's a, it's a good thing. Like, and I'm not all about numbers and tax dollars, but lost is a real thing. So whenever folks spend money up in Warren County, it makes me happy because it, uh, it helps everyone. So anyways, there's a lot of good things coming up this summer. Um, hopefully you can make them.
And it's free parking and free entry at the fair too. So if there's anything to go walk around.
And it's one of the better fairs in Iowa.
Yeah, I heard an advertisement today for, I think it was the Boone County Fair and it's three days. And we get, uh, we get five days of our county fair. Yeah.
There you go. Lot of good stuff. So, anyone else? Seeing that, that brings us to number 13. That's public input. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. The board's not going to take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. No public input will be allowed for any of today's agenda items. If you have anything to share, please step up, state your name, your address, and we'll hear you.
Hi, my name is Beth Jensen, 15957 Johnson Street. And with the holidays, the Fourth of July just happening, I was very surprised to learn that because you live in the country, you can shoot off fireworks three nights in a row. And we were told when we called that it was because you guys have passed that. Is that correct?
I think there was a new law passed at the legislature.
Yeah.
I don't know what the days were or, yeah.
Oh, okay. See, we were told it was county and I was like, isn't two days enough? You know, we live in subdivision, we have animals and it's like professional fireworks out there three nights in a row. Yeah, like after 11 o'clock on Sunday night.
I think there is, uh, what happens is if you're in incorporated areas, if you're in a city, the cities have the ability to restrict it further down.
Not, not after the state law.
But, but not, not completely. Um, so Des Moines and Johnston and some other areas, I think Norwalk at one point tried to ban them. And then the state came in over the top and said, nope, July 3, July 4, maybe Christmas. I don't know anyone who lights off fireworks at Christmas, but.
I think it's New Year's.
New Year's or whatever it is. I mean, there's, there's a little dab of that, but the state said you can't restrict it on these days.
If you're. Third, fourth, and fifth, then.
Something. And new, for, for the incorporated area. So if you live in a town, the city can restrict it down to just those couple, three days or whatever. If you don't live in a town, then I think it's, it, it's a wider number, but it, of days and times, but I.
Free for all.
Eh, kinda. But I think there still is a, a hard cutoff. I, I think it still might be 11 o'clock or 10 o'clock, something like that, but.
On the weekends, it's midnight and it's 11 PM on the weekends.
Okay, thank you.
But that would be a state rep conversation.
We were told it was you guys, so sorry about that.
No, you're okay.
That's all right.
Thanks for coming to our meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, good.
We have approved firework permits for like individual fireworks shows, um, but I don't know of any. Maybe Don would know. We don't have a fireworks ordinance or anything like that.
What was the address again? 15?
We just, yeah, we just follow the state law for the unincorporated parts of the county.
I don't, you know.
You're okay.
I like fireworks too, but it comes a point where enough is enough, you know? And it's so hard on livestock. Yeah. Okay, the other thing, I guess Tanya was going to talk, but, uh, speaking of dust control. Last year, of course, we paid for dust control and we've always had it put on our road. We get the majority of the balloon traffic in the little curve on Johnson Street, you know? The ones that drive by. And last year we did not get dust control before the balloon classic. And we were told it was because you guys, or you guys hadn't approved it yet because the roads weren't done or something. Just wondered if that could be bumped up to where we have dust control again before the classic.
Are you saying the, like, do you use Heffron or Jericho?
We use Smith.
Smith? I'm assuming that.
I called them last year and they said that they had to get approval from you guys and the roads weren't ready.
Typically they won't come out and the engineer is here, but if the road hasn't been graded, they don't want to treat the road because if they treat the road and then it's graded.
Right.
That'll mess everything up.
Before they got the road graded and applied the dust control, we get a lot of traffic out there, you guys.
So you do want them to coordinate with the engineer though, because you don't want to be, you're paying for your dust control. You don't want it to go, you know, to the wayside.
Prioritize this a little bit since we are so close to the balloon field and get so much traffic. It would be nice.
We, we just passed something tonight about, about that specifically. Um, that the engineer has a hard close on that, on 140th. Is that where, do you live by that?
And then 160th.
Okay, okay. Sorry. Is there a lot of traffic that goes through that area?
It's a closed loop.
Yeah, you're right off 92.
Every one over the area, people play about dust traffic. It's how far out do you really go and how much dust control are you willing to make a lose?
Well, we're not saying that we're wanting to pay for dust control, but could we get a, could we get a grader down that so they can get the dust control applied?
And we're right across the street from the balloon field, so people can use our street and watch and we, we get access now.
And it hadn't been an issue until last year, so we're just asking if you could please maybe prioritize that.
Okay, well, it is up to our engineer, but I'm, I'm sure he's doing his best with that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, sir. Hello, my name's Roger Landon. I live, uh, rural residence about four miles north of Circleby Lumber Yard. I'm at 6614 133rd Avenue, southwest of Somerset. And I'm just here to give input, to comment that Supervisor DeWitt made about the potential change in ordinance on the, uh, size of 10 acres or less. Uh, I've written a, uh, emailed Supervisor DeWitt. I made calls and got no response, but I'm sure he's busy. But I want to tell you that I attended the Rural, uh, Water District Annual Meeting right here in Indianola this spring. And the engineer made it very clear that when all these lines were put in throughout the county, they were only a certain size. And if the ordinance changes to double the number of resident, residences in the rural area, they can't serve any more water. They're almost at capacity, so I just wanted the supervisors to maybe visit with the engineers at Rural, uh, uh, Warren County Rural Water District and see what their limitation is. Even if the ordinances change, people are going to have to drill their own water well if they can't get rural water access. So supervisors, that's my input. Just be aware and communicate with those people. Otherwise, uh, I can imagine people will want to build a house and they say, I can't get in water. I've got to drill a $12,000 wall, well.
Yeah. Thank you. That's really great.
Thank you for letting me appear and, and, uh, give input.
I'm sorry, what was, what was your name again?
Roger Landon. You probably wouldn't know me because I've only lived here three, this is our third summer relocating from Minnesota back to Iowa after 30 years living in Minnesota and working there. But I did vote for you, so you should know.
I do have an email from you.
Thanks for coming back.
I do have an email from you on 531.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name's Rick McGill. My wife and I have lived off of the east of the Somerset Road for 45 years. So we've watched that place develop. And now that the zoning board has decided to create a fairly organized industrial park in Somerset, we're dealing with trucks pulling trailers with backhoes and skid loaders coming out on the Somerset Road and then waiting at the stop sign to try to get out onto 6569. I noticed that about a year ago, DOT managed to, within two weeks, put a nice access lane, turnoff lane for busy bee. But in the wintertime, when busy bees isn't doing much and there isn't much traffic there, we're still skidding down Somerset, or down 6569, trying to make a 90-degree turn onto Somerset with all that traffic coming north. And, um, I'd like to say everybody was a really responsible driver. We turn our signal light on before the top of the hill as we're going north. And they still dog you all the way down that hill. And you have to slow up in the wintertime because it, as good a job as they do on the roads, it's still slick there at that intersection. We're going to get somebody killed there if we don't get some kind of a better access lane onto that and then a, uh, entrance onto the highway. And I recognize that's a tough area to deal with because it's going to take a lot of fill or something to do it. But a stop sign, a stoplight, that's not going to work. They tried that on 65 North at where they built the interchange. They had a stop light there and they had the same issue. People couldn't get stopped. That light would turn and they were getting rear-ended. And so I think something needs to be done. I don't know what the board can do. I know it's a state issue, but I'm sure that the board and the, uh, engineer of this county has to have some kind of dialogue with DOT. And they better be talking to them about putting something in the budget to do that. I know the state's budget's usually about two years out. So we need somebody to start creating some interest there. There's all, there, they got a new development now where the old Somerset Winery used to be. He's talking 40 more homes, 20 the first stage, 20 the second. So that's going to add a lot of traffic. We've seen three new homes built right on, right off of Somerset on the north side of the, or south side of the road, just in the last year. So it's definitely developing. And we've got to have some relief from all that construction equipment coming out with those big trucks. They have dump trucks, pulling trailers. And when they try to get onto 6569 in the morning, and they're going to work like everybody else, and you got all those people coming north to work in Des Moines, it's a nightmare. And you, you can sit there for quite a while just waiting for them to get a, they have to wait for a stoplight change in Indianola in order to ease out into the traffic.
And they don't respect the speed limit at all going north. They get to the top of that hill, 65, they don't recognize and they certainly doesn't abide by it, in my opinion. So I don't want to, I understand what you're saying. They speed down that road for a busy bee like there's no one.
Oh, yeah, I know. It's, well, they're, they're within their legal limit. It's 65 mile an hour speed zone there. But when they see that light, they've got a lane to get over in. And too many of them are just tunnel vision and they're driving right behind you and then all of a sudden they realize that you're going to slow down to 20 miles an hour in order to make that turn. So I'd like somebody to at least jolt the engineer's mind a little bit that that issue is going to have to be addressed one of these days. We're just getting too much development on out that side of town.
Thank you, sir. Anyone online? David? Anyone online? Or in the room? Sort of last call for public comment? Going, going, gone. All right, number 14 is our, setting our next meeting date. Our next meeting will be August 5, 2025. That'll be 9:30 AM back in this boardroom. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your time.
David, I don't think, I don't think you've ever met. I'm Stephanie. It's very nice to meet you. Hi, David.
Yeah, what did these screens go for?
I know. Yeah. They, they don't. They just don't work. They don't do anything. Right? Uh-huh. Yeah. There you go. Well, I do that like to see people, you know? Not, exactly. Well, I didn't realize they couldn't see me. I didn't even think about that. Yeah, I do too. Yep.